Good evening and welcome to our school board recognition on this beautiful June evening. I think it's a beautiful June evening. It was when the day started. It's very special to be recognizing students in June and have them come back after school is out. In fact, we have from kindergarteners, or kindergarteners who were in kindergarten and will be in first grade next year, all the way through seniors who graduated last Friday night. And thanks for really representing your groups. This evening, you'll receive two things that you can only get by being recognized by the school board. First, Vice Chair, Mr. Mullen, could you show the engraved certificate?
I'm not going to do the dance, though.
No dance, but... So each of the students will be receiving a special certificate. And then, something else that's small, but it's priceless: the bear pin.
Scott should do the dance.
Yes. So, students who'll be receiving the... And the way this works, we're going to be starting with the students who have won our school bus safety poster contest. So we're beginning with our youngest, and they will really set the stage. So middle school and high school students, watch what these young students do, and we'll do the same routine. For those of you with cameras, we're going to be with the students in the poster contest. We'll be having Safety Dave come over here a little bit further. And then, each student will come over and will have an opportunity for photos as the students and Safety Dave are there together. And then, Ms. Aubrey Linder, who's going to be our pace setter for this evening, will come across and she'll receive the certificate and the pin. And then, after everybody from each group receives things, they'll come back here. So, you stay there, because this is just perfect for the setup. But, our school district, with Safety Dave Johnson helping out, participate in a state contest for bus safety. And Aubrey Linder, who you see in front of you, was the, our kindergarten winner in White Bear Lake, and she placed second place of all kindergarten students in the whole state of Minnesota. So this is Aubrey Linder.[147.19][147.19][applause] Okay. Aubrey, can you walk across now? And Mr. Mullen will give you the certificate. The pin. If this works, the whole night will go perfectly.[170.81][170.81][laughter] And then Aubrey, you can wait. Yes, right about there. Don't go away. Okay. Now, our second winner, the first grade winner, is Ua Moa. Is Ua here tonight? First graders, you have to check twice. I didn't want to miss anybody. But, Ua's name will be on television as well. Next, second grade winner, Cooper Larson. It's okay to clap. This isn't one of those situations where you have to...[211.12][211.12][applause] Cooper, do we have the right one there? Yep, there we are.[219.12][219.12][laughter] Okay, then Cooper? Okay, all set. So Cooper, you can come across and get this other good And at third grade, Camille Larson.[237.01][237.01][applause] Well done, Camille. Now, at fourth grade, we not only have our fourth grade winner for the White Bear Lake area schools, but we have third place in the whole state in the fourth grade. And that's Peyton Eck.[262.22][262.22][applause] And at the fifth grade level, we have Rosalie Summers.[279.02][279.02][applause] And then finally, the man with all the posters is Mr. Safety Dave himself, Dave Johnson, our school bus safety.[301.33][301.33][applause] Safety Dave didn't know that he was going to be in it too. So, we'd like all of the students to come back now and stand in front of the school board members, and we'll take your picture. So students, come forward. And parents, you're free to take pictures
Safety Dave, move in.
Okay.[336.03][336.03][laughter]
Okay.
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 One, two, three, cheese.
Thank you.
Okay. Could we have all the parents and family members of our young artists, please, stand up and be recognized?[367.25][367.25][applause] And then, students, Safety Dave will give you your posters, and then you can go back and sit down with your family, okay? Just follow Safety Dave, and he'll make sure you each get the right ones here. As the posters are being distributed to the right children, I'd like to ask North Campus Principal, Mr. Don Bosh, to come up and recognize the next groups.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett. I have the privilege to recognize two groups this evening. The first group is our archery team. The scores that the White Bear Lake Archers posted at the national tournament in both the 3D and Bullseye tournaments in May were very strong. The team's scores for both competitions qualify the team to attend the world tournament, which I just found out is in Orlando, Florida, in July, for 3D and Bullseye. Congratulations, Archers. We have a long list with a few of our archers here this evening. Jacob Anderson, Katie Armstrong, Griffin Bailey, Ayla Burkus, Brianna Burkus, Elijah Buckholz, Emma Carroll, Justin Sealy, Abby Torquardt. Abby qualified for state.[460.81][460.81][applause] Stella Kotner, Annika Dahl, Ellen Dean, Ava Driscoll, Emma Dunkinson, Beth Engstrun. Beth qualified for state and nationals.[482.62][482.62][applause] Marcus Engstrun. Marcus also qualified for both state and nationals.[493.71][493.71][applause] Paul Erickson.[501.00][501.00][applause] Paul qualified for state and nationals as well. Jack Gabrielson, Ryan Getz, Joe Gray, Amy Hirsch, Carrie Hunter, Ethan Hunter, Hunter Clock, Matty Lammers, Bella Larson.[523.41][523.41][applause] Bella qualified for state and nationals as well. Carly Mater.[533.04][533.04][applause] Carly qualified for state and nationals as well. Anna McCarty, Josh Norton, Zach Olson, Libby Pope, Kay Rush, Aiden Schepler, Ian Schepler, Kate Shevick, Gilbert Seidschlag.[556.41][556.41][applause] Gilbert qualified for state. Jessica Simonson.[567.32][567.32][applause] Jessica qualified for state and nationals. Jacob Spring.[576.91][576.91][applause] Jacob qualified for state. Cody Tran, Zach Wyman, Austin Wera, John Kotner, who's one of our coaches who's not here this evening. David Gray is another coach who's not here. And of course, our head coach, Becky Laszlo.[600.04][600.04][applause] Parents and family members who are in the audience, please stand and be recognized as And now, archers come back for a photo opportunity.
You can do that.
Make sure you can see their margin of view through a window. All right, we're okay. All right. One, two, three, cheese. One more here. Thank you. Are there any parents?
Parents can step up if you like.
Yeah.
I also have the honor to recognize our boys' track team member this evening. We had one White Bear Lake area high school boys' track team member who represented the district at the state meet. He ran around the track twice to compete the 800 and do as proud as a district, something that I could never do myself. So, that is Josh Truwan in the Tom Paulson, the head coach, cannot be here this evening, but Dave Percival is here as an assistant coach. Dave?[714.82][714.82][applause] If there are any parents or family members in the audience who would like to stand and be recognized as well?
Patty?
Patty.
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 Good evening. I'm Tim Wild, principal at South Campus, and I have...[768.00][768.00][applause] Usually everyone stands when I say that.[772.25][772.25][laughter] I have the pleasure of introducing our girls' track true team. There are two state competitions in track, and one is the Minnesota State High School League Track Competition that just occurred this past weekend. And the other is the Minnesota Coaches Association True Team Competition. The two differ inasmuch as the true team measures the overall depth and quality of the entire team, whereas the state competition, the high school league competition, is often won by a team with maybe three or four high caliber athletes. Our girls were the Section 5 AAA Champions in the true team competition. We're very proud of them. And there's a big team, and we have just a few of them with us tonight. So, I'll have some names to read, and a few of our girls with us tonight. Charlie Adam, Natalie Andrus, Elsa Balada. Elsa...[826.91][826.91][applause] And Elsa competed in the shot put. Maggie Blanding, Phoenix Bradley, Emily Brockberg, not with us tonight, but she qualified all state in the four-by-four, four-by-four-hundred-meter relay team. Emily Brockberg, Ellie Carpenter, Abby De La Rosa, Emma Deutsch, Katie Erdel, Mariana Guerra Reis, Alexis Gidry. Alexis is with us tonight. She qualified in the...[862.32][862.32][applause] Alexis competed in the discus, and she qualified for the state high school league meet as well. Lexi Henin, Rachel Henin, Charlotte Hetzer, and Katie Hoover.[880.06][880.06][applause] Katie competed in the 100-meter dash, the four-by-200-meter relay, and the 200-meter dash. You'll never catch her.[894.32][894.32][laughter] Grace Johnson, Carly Kelsey, Yehida Lansico. She was also all state in the four-by-400-meter relay. Danielle Madden, Sierra McDowell, Claire McManaman, Haley Miller, Josie Moore, Keely Nissler, Opie Alusi, Katie Rineer, Olivia Schwintek, Sydney Shirin, Avery Snyder, Tori Towner, Jenna Townsend, Erica Townley. She was three times, Erica was three-time all-state athlete this year. 100-meter high hurdles, 300-meter intermediate hurdles, and four-by-four relay. She took third in the 300-meter intermediate, fifth in the four-by-400 relay, and eighth in the 100-meter. Wow, amazing, amazing meet for Erica. Kaylee Tran, Kennedy Cheetah, Alana Ulmer, Claudia Verkirk, Maddie Verkirk, Sophie Verkirk, Kaitlyn Wallace, Madeline Wallace, Madeline Williams. She was also all state in the four-by-400. She's in Germany now, so we'll forgive her.[975.25][975.25][laughter] Coaches Brianna Baker, Abby Furlong, Shannon Grant, Kathy Huggett, Ellen Nappenberger, Tyler McCormick, and with us tonight, Coach Patty Percival.[990.00][990.00][applause] And Head Coach Richard Samuelson.[1008.06][1008.06][applause] Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
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 And we'll pose for a photo. Come on in, the picture team.
Girls.
Okay.
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 This will be much easier to pose than if the whole team showed up.
Did I miss something?
Want to make sure that he can see me?
Lily.
All right.
So, Lily, Blessing.
One more here.
So, Joseph.
Thank you.
Ogden.
Thank you.
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 Could the parents for the girls' track team who are with us tonight, please stand and be recognized?[1074.22][1074.22][applause]
Okay, next we will recognize the South Campus Student Council. They were recently honored at the Minnesota Association of Student Council's conference as one of five outstanding student councils in the state for the 2016-17 school year. That's a big deal. What's really remarkable is they give out five, they recognize five schools every year. This is the 18th consecutive year that the South Campus Student Council has been recognized at this And so, when our students are in student council, they have a lot of responsibility to maintain excellence, and we're really proud of the girls who are with us tonight and the entire student council. First, Lily Anderson.[1127.16][1127.16][applause] And others not with us tonight, Mira Arnt, Andrea Berlin, Alison Brown, Adri Danner, Connor DeBoer, Lizelle Diaz, Lydia Downs, Carissa Eberhart, Julia Ilers, Megan Gamrat, Leah Gebke, Kaitlyn Gray, Vincent Han. And with us tonight, rising senior and next year's president of our student council, Blessing Joseph.[1165.16][1165.16][applause] Cassidy Lee, Mark McCutcheon, Whitney McQuade, Jacob Montgomery, Rebecca Montgomery, Mariah Morgan, and with us tonight, Vice President of Capital Division, Elise Ogden.[1189.16][1189.16][applause] Kihyo Oshima, Sydney Peterson, Ashley Rennsted, and with us, Treasurer of Capital Division, And they're starting with us, but Rebecca Rockford, Kaylee Russler, Emma Spindler, Jade Truskolaski, Maya Tidlaka Hammackin, Alexis Vang, Kelly Walby, Abby Walker, Blake Welly, Kaitlyn Whitehouse, Mitchell Woodcock, Paige Ying, Emily Zabrowski, and our Student Council Advisor, Mr. Josh Lane. Congratulations, South Campus Student Council.[1243.66][1243.66][applause] And as they're posing, any parents from our student council reps who are here tonight, please stand and be recognized.[1256.06][1256.06][applause] Sure.
Picture.
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 We'd like to thank all of you for being here this night. We have a few more cookies, because we always have to prepare for the number who might come. But we had a lot of calls and contacts. There's so much going on this evening. Some students are going to Germany, and they didn't wait until Monday night. Lots of sports practices, many other things going on, lots of students working. But, very special to be here. I wanted, because special tribute to our youngest students here, our kindergarteners, your fifth graders, for the bus safety contest, we look forward to seeing you back here again. Congratulations, The school board meeting will begin at 7:00. You're all welcome to attend if you wish.
We're under no obligation to do so.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Newberg, Newmaster?
President?
Wilson?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Fahy here. Kimball?
Here.
Mullen?
Here.
Would you please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have an agenda before us. The recommendation is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Wilson.
Second?
A second by Ms. Newmaster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have before us a consent agenda. And under the consent agenda, there are several items that come in front of the school board regularly. But one of those that we definitely pay mention to is the gifts that we are, that our community is so generous to give to us. And this month is, if I can get there, excuse me. This month, we are blessed... I'll get there, I promise. Oh, there it is. This month, we have several gifts for PTAs, from PTAs across, for several of the elementary schools, and several things from the community. So with that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kimball. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. This requires a roll call.
Newberg, Newmaster?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye. This is, this is the time where we are open for public comment. I do not see any cards up here on the dais regarding public comment. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? With that, we'll move into our first informational item, item C1, which is the White Bear Lake Student Astrological Association. Dr. Lovett?
Point of order. Astrology is not a science.
Excuse me.
Astronomical.
Thank you. Astronomical. Excuse me.
Vice Chair, Colin, I have a school board. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. Mark Garrison, our Director of Technology and Innovation, who will introduce for the first time ever at a school board meeting, the White Bear Lake Student Astronomical Association. Garrison?
Board members, it's, you know, I've spoken to you a lot about our desire to really put technology in students' hands to promote projects that advance the four Cs, that promote innovation, that support personalization, that really advance college and career readiness. Rarely has one of those projects more closely aligned to all four of those goals than this one. And it started with a very low-tech solution. You might know that we have whiteboard tables in our office. And I came up to my office one day to find written on one of the tables in whiteboard marker, a note from Mr. Lammers that said, "Mark, I'd like to launch a bear into space. I need your help. Are you in?" And I said, "I'm in." And Mr. Lammers then assembled this group. Colin calls them merely competent, but Reissa refers to them as a ragtag group of brilliant young minds. They originally came together in seventh grade for Knowledge Bowl, and then Mr. Lammers reconvened this group to launch a bear into space, and they're going to tell you their story. So without further ado, Ryan, Paul, Colin, and Reissa. Hello. I'm Ryan Peterson of the White Bear Lake Student Aeronautics Association. And I'd like to tell you guys our story. So, skip that for right now. This is the team. It's me. I took over lead of PR and getting in contact with everyone we used. Paul Morris was our builder. He constructed a lot of the stuff and helped us with the final edits of the capsule we used. Colin Sibick was our math man. He made all the calculations to set the parameters of the launch, make sure everything was ready to go. And then Allison and Reissa both worked to help fill the balloon up as well as construct the box. Now, we started with Humble Origins. We met one day after Mr. Lammers emailed all of us individually, and he told us this idea he had. He wanted to send a bear into space because he had seen some other guys on YouTube do it before, and he thought, "We could do that." So, he called us in one day, and he told us what he wanted to do. And of course, we were all very excited. We got to work right then and there, and we got in contact with people around the district. And it was obvious that some people kind of were a little hesitant, like, "What are you doing here exactly?" But Mark Garrison, his eyes lit up when we told him. And he gave us all the resources and all the stuff we would need to do this, and let us use the district room, which was of course, very useful. This is us when we were at the launch site, getting ready to fix everything up. And it was kind of chaotic because there was a lot of different groups there working with us on sending up a large air balloon into space. with us on sending up a large air balloon into space. There were two capsules that we sent that day, and one of them had our stuff, along with AP Chemistry students with their own technology and experiments going on. One of those being an iPod that was giving off consistent buzzing, and they wanted to see how the different heights in the atmosphere would affect the sound waves and how fast they could travel. This is us filling that balloon up, and it got very big. And it only increased in size as it flew higher, because of course, as the atmosphere goes, as you increase in altitude, the atmosphere's particles lower. So that means that the helium in the balloon can expand, and the final size of the balloon actually ended up being that of a house. So this is us in the ground. This is one of the two bears that we sent up into space. And then eventually, we got higher than a house, into the clouds, above the clouds, higher than the airplanes, and of course, 99,000 feet into the air. It was at this time, or a little bit after this time, that the balloon exploded and started plummeting 200 miles per hour back to the ground. And eventually, yep, there it is. We chased the bear as it's descent, and we looked up into the sky, and it was really cool, because you could actually see the balloon from where we were because of how much it expanded. If you like looked up and you use this little trick to like look through your hands, you could see this little white dot in the sky, and it was our balloon. Eventually, it landed in a tree. And this was a problem, because we did not have that big a ladder. Instead, we used a giant pole and basically poked it for three hours, and then it fell down.
So Colin?
All right, thanks, Ryan. So this is kind of a lot of work, a lot of prep time mostly, finding funds, building the whole ship, balloon. And, and what we'd like to do is we'd like to give the Bear Award to Dr. Michael Lovett, to kind of dedicate all this work to him for his own work, you know, improving the schools and community. I mean, that's that collaborative space you made in Mr. Garrison's office, which you helped make. We use that all the time. So we'd like to come up, we'd like to give you one of our two bears that we sent up near space. Nice picture.
Are there any questions? Mr. Wilson?
You know, anything earth science related, I'm going to have some questions about it. But relax, guys. It's professional curiosity, nothing more. First of all, coming from one who has launched several high-altitude balloons in my past, did you take, well, first of all, what's the bear made out of? I'm wondering, did you give any consideration for the impact?
It was really, we cared less about impact so much as weight, because the person we worked with, Dr. James Flatt, was very to the book. He really wanted us to be under the 12-pound limit that the FAA sets. And since there were other groups there, we had to keep our own package underneath one pound. So when considering bears, we really only had a couple of options, because we had to keep that weight so low.
Did you ever consider protecting the bear? Like, did you use the balloon itself as a streamer to slow the descent somewhat?
I'm sure it did slow the descent a little bit, but there was a parachute on it as well.
Oh, there was. Okay. And finally, did you use any sort of weight on the balloon to determine when to stop filling it with gas?
I think they, we weren't really in charge of the gas, because you know, we're little kids. But I think they measured it based on pressure.
Not at the surface, but we'll let that slide.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chapman?
Where did you launch it from? And I saw that you chased it for like 80 miles. Where did it come down?
It was Janesville. We launched it from, it's this really small town, Janesville in...
Minnesota.
Janesville, Minnesota, I think it's...
What, south of here?
Yeah.
It went east.
No.
No, yeah, it was south.
Yes. So Janesville is, you know, hour and a half or so south. And, you know, we just went there because we knew that the wind patterns at that place would be right, just most convenient for us. And kind of just circled it down until Dr. Flatt found, he basically just like found this open space, which was just this Lutheran elementary school. And he just went up to the principal of it and said, "Hey, your building is a great wind block. Can we just, I'm a scientist from NASA, can we quickly just launch two balloons from it?" And then we kind of just followed it for three or so hours till it flew 80 miles east.
Whereabouts? I mean, what was the closest town? Do you remember?
It was, it was really out in the middle of nowhere. I actually don't know where it was.
Cool.
Any other questions? Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, I think it's more of a comment, but first of all, you know, someday I would want all four of you, each of you on my team, whatever it is, number one. And Ryan, you know, I'm going to be retiring soon, but I'm going to like look for part-time work. I can be a janitor or anything. So when you are CEO of whatever company you're going to be head of, give a former school board member a job, a part-time job, if you don't mind. Just think, just keep it in your mind, okay? So that was just amazing. I just, you know, you guys used a lot of different skills and knowledge in different areas to do that. I just, it made me immediately think of a Facebook post that I shared yesterday about how Finland is moving to a curriculum, at least in their high school, that features no subjects. Everything's going to be based on projects that then incorporate physics, you know, and other sciences and math, and that's what you did. So they do things like put the students into like, should we, you know, like Brexit or something? Should we exit the European Union? And then they do all kinds of analysis using a lot of different areas of knowledge, and or maybe, maybe should we launch a bear 99,000 feet? And you used math that I could hear, physics, geography, even though you weren't quite sure where you were. And then you filmed it, right? So media, all of that. So it's just, it's just what learning's all about. Great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Fahey?
I'm just really curious, in, you know, the packet, it says it brought back a large amount of data for you to analyze. Are you in the process of analyzing that, or what's your plans to use the data to inform another launch, or?
That wasn't necessarily our capsule. It was mostly other groups that were working on, especially the South Campus. They had their own experiments and like testing for them to like see how things change like high altitude and stuff. But we were mostly focused on, well, showing that a bear went up into that height, so, yeah.
Yes, so the point of our project was to, the bears were a sort of mascot, of course, were at White Bear Lake. And, but it goes a little bit further than that, because we wanted to establish a legacy that we could leave behind for the school with a connection with the U of M and AP Chemistry students. And that's what we did. So the AP Chemistry students, as Reissa mentioned, collected a lot of data and a lot of like altitude and temperature status that they are probably analyzing in their class or were, school's out now. So, yeah. And also, along with this, with this partnership, they worked with kids from an elementary school, I'm blanking on the name right now. It was Matoska. And they developed their own parachutes and tested it with rockets. So even though our little thing with sending up bears into space and seeing if we could retrieve them wasn't that much of a science collection adventure, it led to so many more things and opportunities for students in the future and right now, too.
So I just got to say, this is amazing. I mean, I remember watching the post on Facebook, so thank you all very much. But my question is, what's next?
We are not quite sure right now. That was the plan. Mr. Lambers, he talked to us. He's like, "Guys, this was great. What can we do? What can be bigger? What can we improve on now from our school, for kids, for ourselves, for everyone? We just need to find another idea to work with." That was, that's our goal this summer.
Perfect.
I will venture, though, that, I mean, just one of the great things about having them meet in my office is I get to just hear in on some things. And you'll be happy to know that one of their potential projects does involve geography. So I think that'll be a great potential. And this, this project has now been turned over to the AP Chemistry group, who will continue this going for years. And that would be the idea that each year, these guys start a new project and hand off to another district group to keep it going.
Mr. Wilson?
Great, great job, folks. And as you said, developing LA, I mean, you've, you have, within yourselves, I venture to say, ignited some lifelong learning projects there, and you've left them, you know, paved the path for others to follow. Before I sign off here, one word for you. Rocket sand. Think balloons, but with a rocket.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we'll turn to item C2 on the agenda, the community survey highlights. Dr. Lovett?
Dr. Kaczmarek check is up. Provide some community survey highlights you received at our work-study session in May. The complete presentation of the board's details on board and community has those materials.
The bear told me to turn it on. The, Dr. Kaczmarek will provide an update and a summary of the longer presentation which you received last month on the community survey that was done in early May. Dr. Kaczmarek.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett. Mr. Mullin, members of the board. Always a tough group to follow when you follow students. I drew the short strand tonight. So I'll, I should ask them to come up here and present this for me, but I'll do my best. So the, as Dr. Lovett said, the survey was, was rather lengthy, and the presentation at the work-study was rather lengthy. But what we wanted to do tonight was highlight just a few of the data points that we thought we would share with our community through this broadcast, and also highlight for you as the board. So our, the survey was conducted in early May. 400 registered voters participated in the survey with a margin in error of plus or minus 4.9 percent. We had a representative sample of district voters. We achieved geographic balance, which is one of, which was one of the goals going into it. And one of the, one of the big questions, one of the big takeaways for us in terms of how we're doing as a school district related to this question. So participants were asked the following. Students are often given the grades of A, B, C, D, and F to denote the quality of their work. Suppose that the White Bear Lake area schools were graded in the same way. What grade would you give the local public schools? So of, of those who offered an opinion, 83 percent gave the district an A or a B. And that was a significantly higher percentage than what we had seen in the past, and I wanted to highlight that here tonight. I do want to, I just want to make, just explain the data. Under that 83 percent bullet item, there's a 67 percent of all respondents. So the question actually allowed people to not, to not share an opinion. And so the 67 percent of all respondents responded with an A or a grade of an A or a B. But if you take out, if we take out the, those who didn't offer an opinion, then we were left with 83 percent. And that's where that figure came from. But the chart shows that 67 percent were the A and the B. And if you look at the orange, the orange bar, that's this current survey. A survey that we conducted with the same question back in 2013 is the green bar. And a national benchmark is the blue bar. So this particular, at this particular point in time, our, the favorable rating as indicated by, by this question is quite high. So that's, that's, that's good news for us, and something we should certainly feel good about as a, as a school board and as, as a district. Okay, next, participants were asked to evaluate the quality of the district's teachers, the school board, communications within the community, and the management of the district's finances. I don't have all of the specific data, but our presenter that night talked about how support for all of these areas compared very favorably to metro districts and compared to the data from 2013. In fact, we, we were above metro districts in these indicators as well. So again, a very positive sign for us as we, as we consider moving into a, an operating So the purpose of the survey was to understand the opinions of district residents as we, as we consider an operating levy. And so one of the, one of the questions had to do with, if we were to go to the voters and ask a question about renewing our existing operating levy, would you support that question? And the initial support was very strong, at 69 percent. When participants were, were giving, given more information, and I'll talk a little bit more about what kinds of information, the support increased to 75 percent. And when they were reminded that the, there would be no tax impact, there would be no tax increase with the renewal, our support went up to 82 percent, which is a very nice number to be at, at this point, as we look, as we look at a November election. So three factors that had very positive impact on participants' level of support. So from the initial support of 69 percent, and then up to, up to that 75 percent, these three things impacted participants' opinions the most. Our advanced placement and college in the schools classes that we offer, our career pathways work, and support positions to help students who are struggling. So those are the three areas that had a fairly dramatic impact as to the opinions of, of our community members. So starting off, very supportive, understanding that these are some of the things we're doing with the resources we're receiving, their support grew even further. So later in the agenda, there will be an item where you'll be asked to approve a resolution directing administration to move ahead and develop a ballot question, and we'll talk about that at that point. But this community survey is part of that work that we're doing. And so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them, but we'll resume this discussion later on in the meeting, so.
Are there any questions for Dr. Kaczmarek? I know that we've had this information with the survey being done on the work-study, so we'll, thank you very much for, for your presentation. With that, we'll turn to item C3 on the agenda, which is a superintendent's report. Dr. Lovett?
Mr. Mullin, board members, several things to acknowledge this evening. First of all, before our school board meeting, we recognized elementary students who were district and state winners in the school bus safety poster contest. Really a wonderful group of students to have after the school year is done. Members of our archery team, who have been to state and going on to nationals. Member of our boys' track team, who competed at state last Thursday, last Friday and Saturday. And then members of our girls' track team, some of whom were at the True Team event a couple of weeks ago at Stillwater, and then some of whom competed this past weekend on Friday and Saturday in the state meet. We also acknowledged our South Campus Student Council, which for the, I think, 18th year has been recognized as one of Minnesota's five top student councils. That's quite a legacy that our South Campus Student Government Student Council has. I'd also like to acknowledge two events that are coming up over the next two days. Tomorrow, our girls' golf team will be competing in the state meet, and one of the members of our boys' golf team will be competing as an individual in the boys' tournament. Also tomorrow evening, after you get done with the day outside watching the golfing events, you can go to the Orpheum Theater, where members of our, our cast from Mary Poppins will be participating in the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Showcase. So for those of you who remember well, tapping for weeks afterwards, Step in Time will be performed by the cast as part of that spotlight. Also, special congratulations to Patrick Timmons, who's one of the finalists for the state Triple Threat Award, and Patrick will be performing as well. So that will be a very full special day tomorrow. We'd like to congratulate our graduates. Now, last week, you're well aware that we had Bear Fundamentals, that is, four and five-year-olds who will be in kindergarten next year through our Community Services program. They graduated and had songs and their homemade little costumes. Our kindergartners graduated, our fifth graders graduated in each of our elementary schools. And at the high school level, Transition Plus on Wednesday, our ALC, wonderful graduation on Thursday, and then South Campus graduation on Friday. And Ms. Verdi and Ms. Babcock have been out listening to students and taking their pictures, and I think we're going to have a treat here.
We are. We have a video that we put together with our White Bear Lake area high school graduates, asking them, "What does it mean to be a White Bear grad?" So we thought we'd share that quickly, a just-under-two-minute video.
What does it mean to be a White Bear grad?
Being a White Bear grad means having a community with each other.
Being a White Bear grad means having great teachers.
Being a White Bear grad is I'm gonna miss my staff members, my friends, my job coaches, and my teachers.
Being a White Bear grad means creating interpersonal relationships that connects us to the community.
Being a White Bear grad means being brothers on and off the field and going to college together everywhere.
Being a White Bear grad means we achieved our goals.
White Bear grad is be helpful and be kind.
Being a White Bear grad means letting your creativity flow.
Being a White Bear grad means being inspired by amazing teachers.
Being a White Bear grad means success!
What does it mean to be a White Bear grad student?
Chasing your dreams!
Being a White Bear grad means being confident in who you are.
Being a White Bear Lake grad means you survived high school.
For all four years.
Your adventure begins now.
Being a White Bear grad means for me to miss my friends and miss my teachers.
Being a White Bear grad means graduating with college credit.
Being a White Bear grad means that we'll never stop saying, "Go Bears!"
Ms. Vetti, can you tell us the opening shot? The high school students in cap and gown, where are they and why?
For the first time this year, we had White Bear Lake area high school graduates who came back after they were finished with their schoolwork. They came back one of the days and did a senior walk, and so they went back to the elementary schools that they had attended, either kindergarten through fifth grade, and they walked through the hallways. The students at each of the elementary schools then were cheering for them and seeing them. And as much fun as it was for the students, it was that much fun and probably more even for the teachers that got to see the students that they had taught coming back to say hello. So in addition to that, obviously, the, the graduates had a wonderful time as well.
Just a couple more things. Besides sending our graduates off, we've sent thirty-nine retirees off with over eight hundred years of experience in the school district. We want to acknowledge the, the graduates who are adults, including a couple in this room, were graduating with a class of two thousand seventeen. Couple of other things, the annual report to our community was mailed out a couple of weeks ago, and we know that that gives our community an opportunity to really engage and understand what we're doing. It's a summary, and Ms. Vetti and the team are in charge of that. I want to acknowledge the wonderful work of that. Our annual reports probably over the last seventy-eight years have received national awards every year, and they're well done. And it's because the story is a wonderful story to tell. Manitowoc Days are starting this week. Our students are being, have been very involved in Manitowoc Days. There is a parade and there's lots more, but our students have been winners in the poster contest, the button contest, the writing contest, and the Market Fest t-shirt design contest. Market Fest begins this Thursday. Community members, you can meet school board members and staff on Thursday night between six and nine on Third Street. We look forward to seeing you there. Finally, I'd like Dr. Wayne Kazmicek to come forward and stand at the podium.
No, Dr. Kazmicek, you have to be close when we, we do this, but both Dr. Kazmicek and I have, in part of our career, done some running. And as I finished my, my final superintendent's report of my nine years, I want to do what's called an open handoff to Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you.
I'll just add, one of the things about our relay team is that you have absolute trust and confidence in those who are running with you. And I did an article here a week ago, and I sent it to Dr. Kazmicek in advance because what's true in a relay is really true for us. I'll be running through the finish line, and Dr. Kazmicek is already at a full sprint, ready to pick up the baton. So thank you all for your support, and our community for their support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lovett. Is there any questions for Dr. Lovett regarding the superintendent's report? Okay, with that, we'll go into C4, which is recognition from board member, or from the board. Mr. Kimball?
Yes, at this time, I am honored to represent the board in just paying a little tribute to Dr. Lovett. And so I have a few things to say. I've, I've asked a number of people to, for their thoughts in putting this together, so we'll just get started. I'm going to start off with a couple of quotes from the, the recent White Bear Press article acknowledging the retirement. The story was titled, "White Bear Lake Area School Superintendent Comes to the End of the Storybook." Now, that word, storybook, is an important word in my presentation, so kind of keep that in your head. "The superintendent who swung on the swings, played in the band, and read storybooks to over five hundred classes will say goodbye this summer." Dr. Lovett said one of the most fun parts of his job was reading to elementary students. Every February for about a decade, he has read storybooks to sixty to seventy classes during I Love to Read Month. Willow Lane Elementary Principal, Chris Strife, who is nearby, said Lovett knows the names of students when he comes to visit and even swings with them on the playground. The school dedicated a willow tree in his honor the week before this article came out at their community garden. South Campus Principal, Tim Wald, who is the incoming assistant superintendent, noted that Dr. Lovett always kept his priority on the student experience, remembered students by name, and would walk into any building in the district and call students by name and share a memory with them. Dr. Lovett once noted, or noted in this article, that it's important for us to recognize each child, that each child is different. We want them all to love to read, to love math, and feel like they're good and confident in it, but we also recognize some students will also love art, or to sing, or to play an instrument, or to run, or play sports. My time with Dr. Lovett actually precedes his time coming here. He was the assistant superintendent in Minnetoka, where my sister has taught for many years. I, I only knew Dr. Lovett a little. I was on the board when we hired Dr. Lovett, and my first true, close encounter with, Dr. Lovett started, started with White Bear Lake on July 1st, two thousand eight officially. But on some, a few days after May twenty-second, a couple, a month and a half earlier than when he started, a service was held here in White Bear. My daughter had passed away. And we were at the service, and, and Dr. Lovett walked in and made a point to come up and greet the family, and, and that, that just will never go away from me. That's, that was very remarkable that he came out and did that. A number of people mentioned a few things that they're going to remember about him. They said, "Our students were very important to Dr. Lovett, and he made sure they knew it. He attended events, not sure how he did it, but he was everywhere." He is everywhere. Even if there were three events at different locations on the same evening, he was seen at all three. And he has told some his secret on doing that, but most continue to believe there are three Dr. Lovetts that are out there walking around. They remembered how he would kneel on one knee to be at the same height of a student instead of looking down to them. One staff said he was a tireless worker. The sheer number of hours he puts in is more than anyone can possibly imagine. One staff remember, will always remember his outstanding communication skills, including regular columns in the White Bear Press, articles in the district newsletters, and other media. And we all know he's a master storyteller. As witnessed at any event in which he was asked to speak, always a personalized story. Service to the community, involved in Rotary, YMCA Board, White Bear Lake Education Foundation, Minnesota Private Schools Board, teaching at the U of M, and many, many other groups and organizations. One staff noted his great respect for our teachers and the work that they do. His calm manner in dealing with even the most potentially volatile situations and issues. Market Fest, always at Market Fest, and he developed unique questions to kids that they had to answer to earn the coveted colored pencil. He always has a warm smile and a handshake for everyone he meets. Dr. Lovett provided expertise and testimony for education groups and organizations, including for AMSD, and as a presenter for MSBA school board training. And who will ever forget the iconic orange and black scarf that he often wears? Now we have the senior walk, is another thing that has happened in White Bear during his time here. Other accomplishments, you know, I remember that upon arrival in two thousand eight, our district, I think we were, we were doing pretty well. We had a good district, outstanding staff, quality instruction, and in, in pretty good shape financially and in other measures. But we went from there to what I believe is a much higher bar during these last nine years. Since Dr. Lovett's arrival, and these, these, he'll be the first to say that these accomplishments are not his, they are the district's, but they just happened to be done during the last nine years. Elementary foreign language, Spanish and Chinese in the elementary schools. Like today, before the school board meeting, the student recognition, along with their teachers, their coaches, their facilitators, their volunteers, recognized prior to school board meetings, has been an amazing highlight for the district and for, and for the board, I would say. In fact, it's our favorite part. Kind of goes downhill after that, but it's, it's great. The student-school board liaison happened during this, this time, and those people, those students have been remarkable. The district has implemented orchestra and drum line programs. I'm, and there's so many more than these, but just mentioning some. We've created and are strengthening community partnerships with White Bear Center for the Arts, YMCA, and others. STEM initiatives, international baccalaureate program at Matoska in the middle schools. A pool was built so our swimming teams could have a place to have their home meats at the Y, and along with other partnerships with the Y. Our beginning-of-the-year convocation. Years, years ago, if those have been around, those weren't always the greatest thing to go to. They were kind of, oh, now we gotta get, go to this thing. And they have become a highlight of the staff. There's, they're entertaining, they're engaging, they're energizing, they're just outstanding. The theater program in the district has blossomed during these nine years. Physical upgrades to the theaters have transformed the environment and the settings that are possible at, at our plays. Football field and stadium renovations at South Campus, notably the turf that tremendously increased the ability to, for FIED, physical education classes, other sports to use it, and other programs. We have achieved a level of financial stability, and Wayne is, is to credit for, for that as well, that other districts try to emulate in terms of successful levy referendum, votes, a policy that defines budget balance targets that we stick to, and a commitment by the superintendent, by the CFO, or whatever it is we call you, Wayne, your physician, other cabinet members, and, and, and the board, all are, are committed to be fiscally responsible. There are increased efforts to provide seamless transitions when students move from elementary to middle school, middle school to north campus, and north campus to south campus. And those transitions have become very smooth and very successful. The number of opportunities for students in our district to earn college credits through AP classes, college in the school, and other post-secondary options, we are arguably first in the state in that category, if not second or third, but we are at the top, and people know that. We, we have developed, and we have a meaningful, a meaningful strategic plan that's been in place, and even more important, the board and the community gets regular, consistent updates on it, revisions are done as needed, and, and it's, it's a working document. Multiple people have mentioned the uncanny ability to, for Dr. Lovett to remember names, which means so much to people, including staff, parents, community members, but also family members of staff. He seems to know their names, and, but especially the students. His respect for students and absolute joy in engaging with them is something to behold. Many, here's a story, and this is perfect because Dr. Lovett is a storyteller. Many years ago, a young boy and his father were looking at the pictures up, the graduation pictures from the nineteen twenties up in the second floor, and this young boy asked his father, who was up there in the hallway, if, if, if they could see if the superintendent was available. Well, the father told the young boy, "The superintendents are busy. We, we can't go ask to see the superintendent." The young boy insisted because he said, "Dad, he, he knows me. I want you to meet him." And the father was still telling the boy, "Yeah, he doesn't really know you, and the superintendent's busy, blah, blah, blah." At that moment, Dr. Lovett came walking out of his office and greeted the young boy by first name and asked the boy if he could meet his father. The look on that father's face was priceless. Former school board member asked that I mentioned this. She simply said her thoughts, her memory, by Dr. Lovett's words and actions, he modeled the core values that we see all over the place with grace and sincerity. Finally, at, at the open house on Monday, Dr. Lovett was presented with a couple of gifts, and, and one of them just culminates this presentation here. Most of us are familiar with the White Bear Lake Library and their paver initiative. They have out, just outside the library, on the Clark Street side, a little area where you can sit, and there are pavers that people can put tributes to, to, to anyone, and they are there for, forever, or for a very, very long time. So the board and, and staff honored Dr. Lovett with a paver that will arrive and be put in sometime this summer. And, and we have a replica of it here. You already have one, but actually, since you got it, it changed a little. And so the paver will read, Dr. Michael Lovett, "His storytelling," which is the change from how it was before, "His storytelling and joy of reading endeared him to each and every student. White Bear Lake Superintendent, two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen." So on behalf of, of the board, we, we thank you for all of that.
Thank you, George, and thank you, everyone.
Is there anybody who'd like to add anything else?
Well said, George. Well said, well done, George.
Mr. Chapman?
George, I think you missed a few, though. There's the additions at Matoska and Onika, or not There's the additions at Matoska and Onika, or not Onika, but Vadness and Lake Air or Willow, yeah, I'm getting them all mixed up here, but anyway, there's the additions, there's the safety features in the schools, the entrances and so forth. So just a lot of things, you did a great job there, George, and I'm sure we missed, you missed.
I didn't pretend that we could get them all.
With that, thank you, Dr. Lovett. So we will go into D1, the discussion item, which is the first reading of the three new board policies, or they're not new, but three board policies that have been updated. Typically, the way it works for us is that we bring the policies in front of the board to ask any questions, to review, and then we have a first reading and then we move them on to the following month for a second reading. So with that, Mr. Kimball, would you give us any new updates on the three policies that are being presented this evening for first reading?
Yes, thank you. We have three, three first reading policies. None of them have significant changes, so we'll go through really quick. The first policy is 202 school board officer, officers. And there, there are some language clarifications or updates to, to this policy. And really that is yet no substance content. The second policy is policy 210, conflict of interest for school board members, minor changes, but really just in the form of clarification and a couple of wording changes. And I'll just, I, I just going to, to, to read the key change. There's a section on the limitations on related employees. And this states that the school board can hire or dismiss teachers only at duly called meetings where a husband and wife, brother and sister, two brothers or two sisters, sit on the board as voting members. No contract employing a teacher may be made or authorized except upon the unanimous vote of the full school board. So this may never happen, but we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we understood what it meant and, and, and made some clarifications in the, in the wording. I'm not familiar with us having a husband and wife, brother and sister, two brothers or two sisters on the board as voting members. That really, really is it.
Yeah, Mr. Kimball, do you think it's necessary that we specify to that detail, you know, two brothers, two sisters, could we just say two siblings?
We, no, we, we maybe could. So that's, we're throwing this out there. That's what we came up with in our wisdom on this committee in our first, you know, meeting, but we're certainly open to suggestions.
Is there, Ms. Newmaster?
And I know it's, it's nitpicky, but I agree siblings would cover it without having to delineate exactly brothers, sisters, a brother and a sister, two siblings.
Dr. Lovett, so that process, we would look at putting that change in and bringing it in front of the board next month?
Mr. Mullin, if the, if the change would not be viewed as substantial, I think you could go with action at the next meeting. I think the wording as Ms. Newberg and Mr. Kimball and the rest of us figured out is that the wording is, is probably from a attorney general's opinion from the 1930s or 1940s and that's why the wording is as it is. But we certainly discussed it and considered why it might be there.
Any other questions regarding those three policies?
We have one more.
Paul, did you read the changes for policy 402?
Nope, not yet. So the third one is 402 and really no substant, substantive changes. Again, some clarification in wording, including in the purpose, the purpose was simplified, but not changed. And also in section C that, that you have seen and will see. And then just a clarification on our, the title of our Director of Human Resources and that's pretty much it.
Any, any questions, comments, concerns regarding the three policies before us for the first reading? With that, we'll take the small changes under consideration or, and then bring it back for a final reading, reading at our July 10th board meeting. With that, we'll get into our first operational item, E1, approval of the preliminary 2017, 2018 budget. Dr. Lovett?
Mr. Mullin, I'd like to, Dr. Kasmatzek is back and I know that he'll be presenting the budget, but in the last three and a half years, Dr. Kasmatzek and the team have just done a remarkable, remarkable job giving us a very stable budget. We're grateful to the legislature for the 2% increase in general education revenue for the two years. And so that's a change that has occurred between the more detailed presentation that Dr. Kasmatzek did before.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lovett, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So back on May 22nd, we talked at some length about the, the school district budget for the next fiscal year. That was the scheduled date of the end of the legislative session as well. So we were, were basing some of our data on assumptions that we were making based on where the governor was with proposal, where the legislature was with proposals and so, and they did, they didn't wrap up that day like had been scheduled, but they wrapped up later that week. So as Dr. Lovett mentioned, what you see tonight, the numbers you see tonight, take into account some of the, the more significant changes from our assumptions to what actually ended up coming out of that session. So our formula allowance, we had been, we had been using 1.75 for fiscal year 18 and 1.5 for fiscal 19. That came in at 2%, so we made those adjustments and the, the per pupil amount is listed there. That's a, a 2% increase is a $121 increase on the first year, 124 on the second year. Other categories, we won't know the full impact until, until some things get sorted out. A good example is school readiness plus. That's an application for funding for our preschool programming. So if we're funded, then we would move ahead with that, with that program and then we'd come back to you with our mid-year revision to make sure that gets included and then you, you approve that change. So that's, that's typically what we do. We present what we know at this point and then things that may change based on either the legislative session or things like, you know, if we see a spike at a kindergarten class at one of our schools and we add a section, then we will make adjustments to our budget and then that will come back to you mid-year. This year, we're going to do that mid-year adjustment in December prior to the turnover in board and new board members. So big picture for, for our general fund, for our preliminary budget for fiscal 18. We're presenting a balanced budget tonight, balanced to the tune where revenues exceed projected expenses by about $110,000. We worked in the new revenue assumptions. We also worked in the, we had some discussion about vehicles and what we needed for student transportation. And so we actually worked that, from that discussion, we worked though, some of that into this budget as well. So we, you wouldn't see that now at the, at the, during the revision, it's in now. So that, that was one of the other fairly significant changes from May 22nd to today. Otherwise, everything was relatively, we left everything relatively the same from our discussion in May. So again, a balanced budget, that's a, that's an important point, that's a, that's a goal for us and we're able to present that again tonight. Another thing that we, we use in addition to having a goal of a, of a balanced budget is we, we track our fund balance and Mr. Kimball mentioned this a little bit earlier about some of the standards we use and some of the metrics we use to, to make sure that we're sound financially. And one of the things that you did as a board about three years ago was adopt a fund balance policy. And our fund balance policy states that we should have between 12 and a half and 16.7% of our expenditures in reserve. And at the end of this, this next fiscal year, fiscal year 18, we're targeted to be at 15%, which is well within that range. And in fact, if we, if we look at the out years on the, in the next three years, we, it would be just projected for 2021 where we, where we would take a dip, but there's a lot of time between now and then. We're very conservative with our revenue estimates going out too far. And so I have no concern that we'll fall out of this range with, even in the next three years. So, so again, as has been mentioned earlier, we're, we're on sound financial footing and that's important as we head into an operating levy renewal this fall. The support of our local taxpayers is much appreciated and that as much as anything has allowed us to remain stable while adding programming and, and maintain a balanced budget even during these times where we, we've, we've done a lot as Mr. Kimball went through a list of programmatic changes that we've made in the last few years. Very briefly on our, our projections, I alluded to these a little bit. We have fiscal 19 and fiscal 20 are the two that I'll just highlight very briefly here. We're projecting two years out, a deficit of about 400, above 500,000 and then about 650,000 the year after that. For those of you who have been around, you know that, that those are manageable figures and as we move closer and we, as we move throughout the next, the next year, those numbers will be revised and our goal again will be, will be to come forward with a balanced budget for fiscal 19. I don't see that that will be an issue with where we're at right now, what we're projecting. I'm confident we'll be able to do that for the next couple of years. So a little bit about the budgeting process, again, just a reminder, so we do our preliminary budget approval now and that allows us to move ahead then into the next fiscal year with our, with our budget. We also, we also do these projected budgets based on a lot of different assumptions for, I refer to them as the out years, so the years, the years going out from this next fiscal year. And each, each time we do a revision or we do an approval like tonight, or we do a revision in December or January, whenever that may be, we revise these projected numbers as well because the, this is what we use as we do our longer range planning. All right, moving on to nutrition services, our nutrition services budget, we're, we're projecting a balanced budget there. Our revenues exceed expenses by, by a small amount of 12,000. This, these numbers do include a meal price increase, which you will be asked to act on later in the meeting. Those increases are, are, are part of the, the budget that we talked about on May 22nd. And again, in a, in a few minutes, we will take up that, that recommended action. And then our community services budget, we're, we're projecting a $79,000 deficit, so expenses will exceed revenues, but those are largely one-time expenditures in part due to an expansion of our early childhood programming. And, and again, as we talked about on May 22nd, if you look at the out years, there's a, there's a, there's a plan, we're not, we're not creating a structural imbalance. In fact, we, we've, you know, the, the following year, that is cut in half and then I believe by the third year that we're back to, back to balance. So it's not a, it's not a figure that should cause concern given the, the fund balance in community services budget and also just decisions about program expansion that require some one-time expenses to, to get up and running. And just a couple of things, again, the, some of you may recall that we had been doing a general fund, a transfer of general fund dollars to the community services fund. So we phased that out with fiscal 17. So the current fiscal year that we're in now is the first year in quite some time where we didn't do that. And that was an important change because that was upwards of $400,000 each year. And so we've, we've discontinued that. Voluntary pre-K or school readiness plus, these are two programs that have been added in the last couple of years in Minnesota. We've applied for voluntary pre-K, will likely modify our application to be for school readiness plus, which the, which, which we're allowed to do based on the law change this past session. And so that additional revenue remains a possibility, but the, the, the deadline for that is sometime here this month, actually, I think it's the end of the month. And we won't know if that's funded until, until sometime in, in July. So, but we would update you certainly if, if we're, if we receive those additional funds. The, the chances look pretty good that we would receive funding for two of our schools and that would be, that would be Birch Lake and Willow Lane. So based on, it's largely based on your free and reduced count and it appears that those schools are above the threshold that would likely be funded. So, so there's some optimism, at least the last meeting I was at, there's some optimism about possibly receiving those funds, which would allow us to expand offerings at those two sites. And not necessarily at those sites, we would, we may end up having to create attendance boundaries for preschool in order to encompass the, the highest number of students that we could serve. So there'll be more on that coming if I, I'm possibly getting ahead of, ahead of the process here, so we'll wait until we find out if we're approved or not. And there'll be more discussion about this potentially in July, we may know a little bit more in July. Talked a little bit about budget planning as we go forward or just a reminder of what's to come. So tonight, you're asked to approve our preliminary budget. Over the summer, we do a lot of data entry, getting ready for our preliminary levy that you will act on in September. Our operating levy renewal referendum is planned for November 2017. There's an item later in the agenda directing us to come with, come with a ballot question at the July board meeting and so we will, we will do that. Our auditor presentation for fiscal year 17, our current fiscal year, will be done in November or December. We've been targeting December in the past, we'll see if we can move that up or not. We're one of the earlier districts, in fact, our auditors have already been here doing some of their pre-work. Our final levy certification is approved in December as required by law. And then our, we'll, we'll plan a revised fiscal 18 budget presented to you in December at that same meeting. Also at that same meeting, we'll, we'll revise our projected budgets for fiscal 19 and 20 and 21 actually, but once you get too far out, there's, you know, you make, you're quite conservative and so things don't look quite as good, but. And then also with, something we keep an eye on is our health insurance renewal and that will be, that'll be coming in January, January 1st for 2018. So you would take action on that likely in November, so. Okay, so tonight, board action is required. This is our opportunity to take board action. State law requires that we, that you do take action on our preliminary budget by June 30. So with that, Mr. Mullin?
With that, we have a recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2018 preliminary budget as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Under discussion, are there any questions? No questions, there'll be a roll call vote, please?
Newmaster? Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
That the fiscal, the budget passes. Action item E2 is the action on probationary teacher non-renewal. Dr. Lovett?
Mr. Mullin, Linda Gores, our Director of Human Resources, can briefly explain this really routine way of, of terminating the contract of a probationary employee and the reasons that we do that under state law. Ms. Gores?
Thank you, Dr. Lovett, Mr. Mullin and members of the board. You have before you a recommendation for a release of probationary teachers. In accordance with the Minnesota Statute 120240, this has to occur before July 1 of each year. Can release our staff for any number of reasons that can include financial limitations, if teachers are returning from leave, if there's a reduction need for the teachers and, and other reasons as well.
And I believe there's a resolution that needs to be read. Is there a motion that we need to get first?
I believe the resolution is, is read by, by the clerk?
Yeah, will the clerk please read the resolution?
Whereas the above-named teachers are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 624, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 624 that pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.4 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of the above-named teachers are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 624 are hereby terminated at the close of the current 2016-2017 school year and are not renewed for the 2017-2018 school year. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of the contract as provided by law and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form.
You've heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second? This requires a roll call vote?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Are we going to have discussion or?
I'm sorry, I'll go back, I apologize.
I just had a question.
Okay.
Ms., Ms. Gores, I was just curious if you can share with us why we have these? Ms. Gores, I was just curious if you can share with us why we have these individuals showing up that didn't show up last month, because I think this is about the first time I recall, and maybe I'm forgetting, in past years, having more than one list, and I'm wondering why.
No, I think you're correct, Mr. Chapman, and White Bear Lake, I don't believe we have had more than one board meeting where action has been taken. It does occur, and it's occurred, I've been in other districts where sometimes we try to get out very early to make sure that our teachers know that we might not have a position for them, and things might change in the meantime, and there can be other reasons as well, but as long as we take action by July one, then we're still within the requirements of the law.
Are there any other questions? I apologize, please, roll call vote.
Okay, Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye. Motion passes. Next is E-three, which is the action on the meal price changes for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Dr. Lovett?
Again, discussed at our work-study session in May. With us this evening is Dr. Kazmercheck, and Nutrition Services Coordinator Bridget Lane.
And thank you, Dr. Lovett, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So we did talk about this on May twenty-second, and we talked about it briefly. Someone's clicking my, okay, and we talked about this briefly earlier in the meeting. The nutrition services budget was built on some assumed increases, and Bridget Lane is here, Nutrition Services Coordinator, and she can talk a little bit about why this is necessary, and this is something that is likely to happen on an annual basis, and so if you can give a little bit of background. Appreciate it.
Good evening. So the meal prices every year since, for about three years now, are required based on what is called the paid lunch equity, and it's required to look at our paid meal prices at elementary and secondary levels to ensure that the prices are covering the cost of the food and labor that goes into them, and that they're not being subsidized by any federal reimbursements for free and reduced meals. So that's where the tool comes from. Again, this year, we're required to increase by a weighted average of eight cents, and so one way or another, one group had to go up by ten cents, and one group had to go up by five cents at a minimum to meet that weighted average. So that's where our prices come from at lunch. Elementary goes up ten cents to two dollars and seventy cents, and the secondary goes up five cents to three dollars. We did not raise any breakfast prices. We did raise an adult breakfast price, and that is simply based on, we have adult minimums that do come out every July. I believe it will be just under two dollars, is my estimate. For summer, it was two dollars and twenty-five cents, so just to be on the safe side, we bumped it to two dollars, and then keeping it at four dollars for lunch for staff and adults that choose to eat. We do still offer the free and reduced program throughout the year. The Minnesota Legislature is able to allow reduced meals to be at no cost again for all students, so that's breakfast and lunch. Then, of course, free is free for all students. We also have at Willow Lane a free supper program that is available to any student that might want to come in. In between, I believe it's three forty-five and four o'clock, they offer those meals through the extended day program. And then we have, of course, the summer meal program, which is up and running tomorrow, and that's at five sites, free to any child that would come in during our open times for breakfast and lunch. So we have those resources available for families that may not be able to quite make the thresholds of the free and reduced, and then we also work with the food shelf and the kid pack programs to help on the weekends. So we still have every resource available, but for paid students who don't meet the free and reduced threshold, we're required to increase the prices again.
So with that, we have a recommendation to approve the meal prices for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year as presented. Is there a motion?
I believe we approved the meal prices.
A motion by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I was just curious, we've been over the numbers quite a bit. How did you decide which meals to increase the prices on and which not?
There wasn't a whole lot of logic, other than the three-dollar threshold is a big threshold to cross for any group. So we have, we serve about thirty-one thousand paid lunches in the month of October we were required for the secondary, and thirty-two thousand for the elementary. So there was really no big difference there, other than to give families the peace of mind that we're not going over the three-dollar threshold yet for the secondaries.
Very good.
Mr. Chapman?
Do the same requirements apply to the adult lunches at all, in terms of how much you can charge or can't?
Yeah, every July, we get a new document that comes from MDE that requires us to make sure we're above the minimum adult requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? With that, we've got a motion and a second. This would require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to operational item E-four, which is the action on the property and casualty insurance for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Dr. Lovett?
Mr. Mullin, members of the board, as Dr. Kazmercheck prepares to discuss the property and casualty insurance rates for next year, I want to acknowledge that this is another example of an innovation over the last few years that has enabled us to reduce our costs outside of the classroom, and it's a contributing factor to our balanced budget, and Dr. Kazmercheck and others have been behind that, and I want to acknowledge the important discussion with the board, including Mr. Chapman, who has expertise in this area, and that's an example of some of the changes that have allowed us to really control our class, our costs outside the classroom. So, Dr. Kazmercheck?
Right, thank you, Dr. Lovett, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So just again, a little bit of background, the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust, or MIST, was formed back in twenty thirteen, fourteen. We entered MIST in the second year of its existence. When I came on board in January of fourteen, we were looking at our current provider, and we were getting quotes. At the same time, we were doing some work with getting proposals from the MIST group, and ultimately, the decision was made to go with MIST. We thought we could achieve a more stable premium, and actually, we knew we could get better coverages as well, and we've added to our coverage every year. And I shared this with you, if you just, if we just focus on the cost, and I can assure you, our coverage is better than what it used to be, but if we just focus on the cost, you can see the history of what's happened since our joining in twenty-fourteen, fifteen. So our premium has gone down from that point, and if you compare our current year to what we're projecting for next year, we see a ten and a half percent decrease in our premium. Now, the market's a little soft right now, so we're the benefactors of that, but this purchasing model has certainly proven to be successful. And in fact, we're at twenty-two districts now, and I think the MIST board is in the process of approving at least two more members, so that will continue to grow. Slow growth in this pool is a good thing, and it looks like we'll be adding two to four more within the next few months. I've been on the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust Board for the last three years. My term ran up, I did not run for that position again, just given the job change, and it wasn't, the district didn't hold the position, it was an individual, so I couldn't just, you know, appoint him to it, or the board wouldn't just appoint him, we had to have a new election. So I chose not to continue with the board, but the next time a seat opens up, I suspect that we would maybe want to get back on that board. It's been very helpful to be part of it. The meetings are quarterly, and they're open to the public, so that's probably something that Mr. Wald and I will attend, just to help him understand the concept and the process and what goes into it. So anyway, it's proven successful, and so you're being asked to approve a premium tonight that's two hundred eighty-two thousand, considerably lower down from where we were just a few years ago. And a lot of contributing factors, but a big reason is because we're pooling with other districts to buy insurance differently and in a more effective way, and this method will only continue to grow as more districts learn about it. I wanted to mention, too, last month, you approved our workers' comp plan, and I didn't share with you the broader context of the last few years. Now, this is just a standalone insurance policy, this isn't part of MIST, but I wanted to show you where we've been the last few years. We've been right around that seven hundred thousand dollar mark, and we are, we saw a nice decrease there as well. So, and again, back in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, some of the proposals that we had had us up over a million dollars. So we went with a firm that we hadn't worked with before, and that was that six hundred eighty-six thousand figure, and they've been great to work with, and we've been quite happy. And again, you acted on that last month, I just wanted to provide you a little bit more context. So again, a good example of what Dr. Lovett mentioned, we've been able to reduce our costs in other areas, which allows us to maintain that balanced budget and keep resources in the classroom. So with that, I would recommend approval.
With that, we have a motion to approve our insurance package with MIST in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and six cents, effective July one, twenty-seventeen, through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second? Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any questions? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Dr. Kazmercheck, I just want to make sure I have the sequencing correct. Since we've already approved the preliminary seventeen, twenty-eighteen school budget, are the savings that we gained through the MIST premiums, and then the, that's missed, then the workers' compensation, at this point, those can't be entered into the budget exactly?
They're built into the budget.
They'll be picked up at the audit?
They're built into the budget.
Those savings have already been factored in?
Yeah, so we've known about the, you know, we've known about these long enough so that we were able to build them in.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
And Mr. Chapman?
I just want to thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck, for having sat on that board, because as you said, we were, what, seventh, I think, joining MIST?
Yeah, seventh or eighth, yep, we were one of the first few.
These programs, as we're seeing, as long as they're well-managed, and as long as the losses of the membership remain in check, I, we're going to continue, in my mind, in my experience, then we're going to continue to see some good savings compared to what is going on in the commercial marketplace.
In fact, at my last board meeting, we, at my last MIST board meeting, we talked about, at some point in the next twelve to eighteen months, there is likely going to be returned premium to member districts based on the fact that we're building a fund balance now, and that the point isn't to build a fund balance in this, it's to buy insurance, so some of that will start coming back to districts, so it's been very successful. Yep.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. This would require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye. Seeing no nays, the motion passes. Operation item E-five, which is the action to direct the administration to develop a proposal for the renewal of the referendum levy. Dr. Lovett?
Well, Mr. Mullin, board members, Dr. Kazmercheck is now on his last item of this evening, and his last item as the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, so I know that Mr. Wald has been watching carefully this evening for what his coming months may be like. But this really builds on the foundation of the survey that was described earlier that showed very favorable support for the schools, for our whole population, and a very strong initial support for a potential no-tax increase levy. Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, thank you, Dr. Lovett, for the intro, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So again, you are, we're not making decisions tonight about what the structure of the language that will appear on the ballot, but you are, this gives us an opportunity to talk about this in a public setting, and you're directing us to move ahead with developing that ballot language. We will discuss it at our work-study meeting on July tenth, and take action on it later that night at the regular board meeting. So our existing authority is one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars per student. We originally approved this back in two thousand seven, with sixty-three percent of voters supporting the measure, and it was renewed in two thousand eleven, with seventy-three percent of voters supporting the measure, and it expires after the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year. So not after this next school year, but we actually have two years left on it. So we're going now, and that gives us plenty of time for a renewal. So we can renew for up to a period of ten years. Our particular operating levy includes an inflationary adjustment annually, and that adjustment is determined by the Department of Education, or at least they're the ones who communicates the increase to us. Some other entity determines the increase, but ours includes that inflationary adjustment. At this point, and we don't, I don't anticipate this changing, we would be recommending a renewal of our existing amount, so we would not be asking for any additional per pupil increase, so there is no tax increase from one year to the next. In fact, from the end of the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year into the next school year, when the renewal would kick in, we actually see a little bit of a dip in our tax rate, and so we'll communicate that out as we move closer to the election day, but it's important that we, that our public understand that this is a renewal, and this is not going to result in a tax increase. So election date is November seventh, twenty-seventeen, and again, you will be asked to take action on a ballot question at the July tenth school board meeting, just a few weeks away.
We have a recommendation to move to authorize district administration to develop parameters for the operating levy renewal question to be discussed at the July tenth, twenty-seventeen work-study meeting, and acted upon at the July tenth, twenty-seventeen regular school board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Just one quick question, I'm sure the answer's going to be yes, but at the July meeting, Dr. Kazmercheck, that's when we'll finally start to address the length of the renewal that we're seeking, and I'm sure that'll be woven into the question.
Right, so we'll need a decision on the length, and at this point, I mean, I think, you know, what I'm thinking the discussion will center on is either an eight- or a ten-year renewal, and I think that's where we'll center our discussion, and we can talk about the merits of both of those. We currently have a six-year, we can go up to ten. The results are not impacted statewide as to the length of the levy. So this has provided a great deal of stability for our school district, and so establishing that stability for eight to ten years would be a really helpful thing for us. And we also have to take into account other potential elections down the road, so we want to, and we'll talk about that at our work-study meeting, yep.
Any other questions? This also would require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye. The motion passes. Operational item E-six, action on acceptance of the Sawyer Family Foundation grant for Willow Lane Elementary School.
I'd like to invite Chris Treif, Principal of Willow Lane. This is a sizable grant and a wonderful story that goes along with it. Ms. Treif?
Good evening, board members and Dr. Lovett. We were, Willow Lane, the Sawyer Family Foundation has awarded Willow Lane Elementary School with the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar grant to fund the ALIVE program, which is trauma-sensitive schools programming for three years, with school-wide implementation beginning in the twenty-seventeen, eighteen school year. There's research behind, showing that kids living in poverty experience more trauma than other students. When students come to school having experienced trauma, they tend to act out in ways that are not conducive to the learning environment. This generous grant provides critical supports for Willow Lane to create the conditions for students that have experienced trauma to be more successful in school. Willow Lane currently has a free and reduced student population of sixty-one percent. Some of the goals of the program are to create and sustain a classroom environment of open conversation among the students and the teacher about the difficult things they face in their lives, and the goals are to transform their worries by giving them the language for stressful events and the emotions that they cause, they don't know what to do with these when they're young, reducing acting-out behaviors and the need for discipline, help students think about issues regarding child safety, and improve academic achievement. This program, the ALIVE program, has reliably reduced office referrals in and out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, physical fighting, and out-of-network places, placements. Feedback from teachers and students that have the ALIVE program at their schools indicate that students, classrooms, and schools have become calmer, offering much more time for students, teachers, and administrators to do the jobs they're intended to do, rather than attending to the behavior problems of their students. Do you have questions?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Are there any questions? Mr. Chapman?
What... This is awesome. I mean, how did we come about learning about this grant and applying for it? I'd like the background on it.
It came to us.
It came to us.
It came to us, and it came through community members. We were recommended to the Sawyer Family Foundation for this grant by Ms. Ann Hennessy, who is the owner and director of the Close to My Heart Childcare in Maplewood, who uses two buses to bus kids to Willow Lane, and many of them are out of district. So she recommended them to us, and the director of the Sawyer Family Foundation is Mrs. Colleen O'Keefe. She's sorry that she can't be here tonight with me. She was the director of the White Bear Lake Area Schools Education Foundation at one point, and that's how she knew about Willow Lane and the White Bear Lake Area Schools. So they offered this just... We had been studying how to reach our kids in poverty. We had done two book studies as a staff, school-wide, teaching kids with poverty in mind and engaging kids with poverty in mind. And in those books, it spoke to the trauma that many of those kids face. We did a poverty simulation at Willow Lane for the whole staff, along with Matoska staff for one of our professional development days. So we've been having the conversation, and I've been looking up, what does this mean to be trauma-sensitive and trauma-informed, and how do we go about creating that here? And this came to us, and we were so excited. And I had been trying to get a DVD called Resilience, and I got the DVD, and I had met with Colleen O'Keefe from the Sawyer Family Foundation and was going to meet with David Reed Johnson, who started the ALIVE program. And I got the DVD the day before I was going to meet with him, and I watched it that night at home, and his program was on, the Resilience documentary, which is probably the most recent research on meeting the needs of kids that have faced trauma.
Any other questions, comments? George? Mr. Kimball?
Did you have a follow-up?
No, I... The only comment is just, this is wonderful. I mean, it's not every day we get a grant like this. Wow.
So kind of serendipity there, then, with you watching the video and... But so is it... Is the 328,000, is it staffing or mostly?
It's staffing and programming, and so they will have people that will come in and do the programming, so it will not be falling onto the teachers. They will come in, and they will go into classrooms for a half an hour each week. Each classroom will get an hour and a half, actually, a week, but they will work with all kids for a half an hour, where they will set up the stage. They have a Miss Kendra's legend, they have a mantra, they have a letter-writing component to it. So they will set that up and tell that story, and they ease into it just week by week. And then the other hour for each classroom would be four 15-minute pull-out sessions. They're called stress reduction sessions for kids. And kids come in in the mornings, and they'll put their clip. I have little worries, I have some worries, I have lots of worries, so right away, teachers can see who they need to get to. Sarah Paul, Dr. Kazmierczyk, and Tim Wald and I, along with several other staff members from Willow Lane, were able to go visit a school in Minneapolis that is implementing the same programming through the same organization, and it was pretty amazing to see what they were doing with kids, to help them be able to voice the things they're worried about in their lives and not act out. And 100% of the teachers that have participated in this program, programming, recommend it, which is rare, to find 100% of teachers that agree on something that works. We're very excited just for our kids, but also observing it in action in Minneapolis. The teachers stay in the room throughout the programming. It's not a time where they can leave, so what the teacher can learn about the child and what they've been through, I think teachers respond differently when they know, and kids don't really get the opportunity to voice what's happening. So on both sides, I think we are really hoping that this can help us in a lot of ways and our kids. We'd like to see our referrals go down, and there's a high need.
Mr. Chapman, you have a... Mr. Kimball, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just that sounds great. So it's a three-year program, and do we know, you know, it sounds like the idea is to sustain it or to build in-house sustainability, so the teachers will learn the strategies and so on?
Right. They would still need, at the end of that three-year commitment, there's probably going to be a need for an FTE to sustain that. And I've talked about a couple different things with the program. In some of the schools, there was a school where they were able to eliminate their in-school suspension person because they didn't need that person anymore. At the end of the three years, they said they couldn't really... They didn't fund a position to keep the programming going, and they eventually had to bring back the in-school suspension person. So it's kind of getting up underneath it and addressing it in a proactive way instead of a reactive way on the other side of things, which I think is always a challenge in schools.
Is there any other questions? This... Go ahead, Ms. Fahy.
I had an original question, but Chris just explained what my original question was going to be. I think in going on the Sawyer Family Foundation website and talking to Chris, I think one of the really, really good things about this, it's the support that's provided to the classroom teacher. It's not go to professional development, get back in your classroom, and do it on your own. It's a three-year... They're in there in the classroom, they're modeling these strategies for the teachers, and they're working with them, all for the benefit of the kids. And Chris, I'd just like to say thank you for the amazing work that you and staff and everyone is doing at Willow. It's a joy to be there each week as a reading buddy.
Dr. Kazmierczyk, do you have something to add?
I had one thing to Mr. Kimball's question about three years and then what. Willow Lane receives a fairly significant amount of compensatory revenue each year, so that would be one of the things that we would look at. If this is working and we wanted to continue funding an FTE because it's truly making a difference, that would be the source of revenue for us to do that, and we would have... We have flexibility with that compensatory revenue that we'd be allowed to... We'd be able to figure that out, so.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions? With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you. So the last operational item is E seven, which is the second reading of four school board policies. Policy 214, out-of-state travel by school board members. Policy 504, student dress and appearance. Policy 620, credit for learning. And then the... Actually, we had two first readings of policy 903, visitors. So with that, we'll take them in one fell swoop if there's a motion to accept all those policies.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Kimball. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the policies pass. We are now at the section of Board Forum. Is there anything for Board Forum? Mr. Kimball?
Well, I just want to again congratulate the staff who have made it through another great school year, and especially a note to the retiring teachers who have been with us. It was a great event when we... Last week or whenever it was, to see them off. So we just want to thank them for their years. Some of them have appeared in other board agendas. We see that there's a few more added here. And just to note, we have a pupil support assistant from South Campus who is retiring after eight years. A full-time cook from South Campus, 26 years of service. Thank you so much. Media clerk at Onika, retiring after 18 years. And then, this was remarkable, we have a field technician at the Area Learning Center, almost 40 years, 39 years with the district, and so thank you very much for that amazing career. And then our speech clinician at Normandy Park, 29-year career with the district, great service for us. So congratulations and thank you all.
Anything else under Board Forum? With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I'll second that. We are adjourned. Thank you.